Thank you very much. As Jeanne Marie said, I am Donna Barbara May with the League of Women Voters of San Diego, and I'm your moderator for this evening's City Council District Nine Candidate Forum. I want to thank our hosts, Neighbors for a Better San Diego, and Viet Voices for sponsoring tonight's forum, and for, obviously, our two candidates for participating. Bathrooms are located out the door to the right, there's also a drinking fountain out there, and if you would all please silence your cellphones or put them on stun, something so they don't make a noise during the... This forum is being recorded and will be available on the League website and our YouTube channel. We have a QR code for those. The League is proud to be a nonpartisan organization. We do not support nor oppose political candidates or political parties. We work on vital issues of concern to members of the public, and for clarity, I do not live in the city of San Diego, so I have no dog in this fight. We are using the League of Women Voters format, and both candidates have agreed to this format. Candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement, and one minute to answer each of your questions. We have a timekeeper, Jeannie Brown. The candidates will see the time intervals and know when they're supposed to stop. Most important part of this forum is hearing from you and the questions you have. We don't accept verbal questions from the audience. We have handed out cards and pens and pencils, and our League pages, if you could raise your hands so you know who to give your card to. They can also help you form your question if necessary. Our question screeners, sitting behind me, are Kathleen Grove and Denise, excuse me, veteran of the League of Women Voters, Donna Givaud, other neighbors for a better San Diego, and Jeanne Wietron of Viet Voices. Please word your questions in a general way so each candidate can answer them, keep them succinct and obviously civil. We don't take questions for an individual until we have a question for both individuals, and only questions appropriate to this branch of government, obviously, and volunteers can assist you in any way. The question screeners will then... Thank you. The question screeners will then organize the questions into categories of a similar nature to avoid repetition and get the questions of greatest interest to you in the audience asked. Please hold all applause until the end so we have time for the most number of questions. And since this candidate forum is designed to provide a nonpartisan setting for undecided voters, please do not clap or boo for any particular candidate. And now, we're going to start with the opening questions, and we're going to give two minutes to Mr. Hoskins.
Before we begin, can we say thank you to everybody? I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the co-hosts, the vote, and more importantly, everyone who took the time to show up this evening. We appreciate it. This is what our democracy is all about, so I do appreciate you taking the time to be here. So who is Dr. Terry Hoskins? I'm a father. I understand the challenges that we face raising a family with limited income, supporting their children as they go through school. I had the pleasure witnessing my daughter when she graduated college, and she graduated into a very strong independent woman, and it gives you a sense of pride. I understand her struggles of people paying rent. For me, my first home that I purchased was a mobile home in Escondido. I was in my 30s. I just recently purchased a home in Rolando Park. This tells me that your situations should never dictate your destinations. Public service has been my life. I spent 26 years in the Marine Corps. I obtained prestigious rank of Sergeant Major. I led Marines and sailors in combat, and I'm a Purple Heart recipient. When I retired in 2008, I joined the San Diego Police Department. I worked for 14 and a half years in District Nine at that substation down off Fairmont. The eight years of that, I was a community relations officer. I've been on every street, sidewalk, alley, canyon, stream bed, and creek bed in District Nine. My two careers are an aggregate of 41 years of successful public service. My core values are honor, courage, commitment, and accountability. Thank you. I can see you, so...
Thank you. Mr. Illa Rivera?
Thank you. I will reiterate the appreciation to our hosts for putting this forum on and everyone for being here tonight. Again, my name is Sean Illa Rivera, and I also am a father to a one-year-old, a husband, a son, and a brother, a friend, and I've had the opportunity to be your council member for the last four years. My passion in life is supporting people and organizations and communities in achieving their potential. I did that as a high school coach, I did that as a teacher, I did that as a community organizer, as an advocate, and I had the great opportunity over the last four years to do that as a council member. That drives everything that I do. Every career decision that I make, every decision that I make as a council member is about expanding opportunity and the belief that when we remove barriers and provide folks a real path, they can achieve incredible things. I've watched that within my own family, I've watched that with the young people that I've worked with, and I've watched that from the position as a council member. And the past four years have not been easy, there's been many challenges, but I also know that we've taken some strides to expanding opportunity. We've made it, we've reduced barriers for young people, we've improved protections for renters, we've made strong strides to reduce air pollution and clean up our environment, and we're just getting started. And I am very much looking forward for the opportunity to talk to you all about what our vision is of opportunity for all, which is a San Diego where every person and every community, no matter their background or who their parents are, has that opportunity to fulfill their potential in life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to get started with your questions. We're going to start with Mr. Hoskins. Do you think San Diego is better off under the current strong mayor form of government? And if not, what do you propose as an improvement?
Yeah, I do like the strong form of mayor government, as long as you have a strong city council. I believe at this point, we do not have a strong city council. We do not have a strong council president. They are in lockstep with the mayor at everything he wants to do. That is not how the system is designed to work. They're not supposed to get everything that the mayor wishes, and currently, that is what we are experiencing. I think if the council were to hold the mayor accountable, I think we would see things that are different. The purchase of 101 Ash Street was a disaster, and that was what the mayor wanted, and that was what the council gave him. So, again, I do like the strong mayor system. I just think that, you know, this is unique because all the council are Democrats, same as the mayor. So it sets a little bit different. Typically, you would have one or two Republicans perhaps, or independents, that would kind of help balance it or challenge a lot of the things that comes out of the mayor's pulpit, but unfortunately, that doesn't happen. So I would like to see it continue, however, I'd like to see it being pushed back, and I'd like to see the council take more of a leadership position instead of trying to blame everything on the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Illa Rivera.
Yeah, I think the question that I heard is, are we better off? And if I understand my San Diego history well, things were not going so well prior to the move to a strong mayor form of government. The city was on the brink of financial collapse, had been the subject of multiple scandals, and that does not mean that the current system is perfect, but it is worth mentioning that the old system, there was a reason why there was a shift. And Terry is right. The system only works when the council is acting as a strong council, and I believe that over the last few years, the council has done more to act as a strong council than it had in any time in recent history. Two months ago, the mayor brought us a proposal for a 30-year lease of a warehouse for homelessness. It was the biggest initiative he put forward this year, and we shelved it. So the idea that we are in lockstep with the mayor is, one, inconsistent with the idea that we blame everything on the mayor, and, two, simply not true. And to believe that either requires a misunderstanding of how city government works or a lack of interest in what is actually going on at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Illa Rivera, we'll start this question with you. Do you have a plan to encourage development on transit corridors such as University Avenue and El Cajon Boulevard?
Yes, well, we've already passed several policies that encourage just that. There are additional measures that need to be taken in order to actually see that to fruition. The property that exists along the two transit corridors that were mentioned is largely owned by private interests, which means they need to want to develop that into affordable housing, or the city needs to take action to acquire that property and turn it into affordable housing. It does not just happen on its own, although we can incentivize it, and the city of San Diego has passed policies that have incentivized just that. It takes time for these things to happen. As many of you know, interest rates have not been going down over the last couple of years. Those interest rates play a huge role in whether or not development actually occurs, especially private development. So I'm a supporter of the city taking more assertive action. I put that in my budget proposals the last few years to acquire property for us to develop, and we need to make it easier to build, which we have also done.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins.
Yeah, I think the city have incentivized the wrong people. They have incentivized developers. That's why we see a lot of corporate developers purchasing homes, turning them into hotels or Airbnbs. You know, on Copeland and El Cajon Boulevard, just down the street, a couple blocks to the west, we see there's a huge, well, I call it a huge, storage facility that was built right on an area where we should have density, where it's walkable, ridable, and transportation is right there, especially for our elders. Instead, we have a storage facility. So we need to incentivize... I don't believe in imminent domain. I don't think we're at that point yet, but I think we need to incentivize the correct people and put density in areas that it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Illa Rivera? Oh, sorry, got a next question. We'll start with you, Mr. Illa Rivera. Do you think San Diego should continue waiving development impact fees, and if yes, how would you propose paying for infrastructure?
Well, I think there's a lot of nuance to that question. What are we waiving development impact fees for? We've talked about incentives to build certain types of housing, and we offer the waiver of certain development, of development impact fees for certain types of development. And that is a way to spur affordable housing development, other market rate housing development as well, but also affordable. And in an economic environment where interest rates are high, absent incentives like development impact fee waivers, we would see even less development of housing. Most people who are being honest with the numbers would agree that San Diego has not produced enough housing over the decades, and we have a deficit to make up. In order for us to do that, we need to spur development. We've done that in certain ways. San Diego's built more housing than many other cities across the state, and the waiver of development impact fees, while difficult to swallow at times, is an important piece of the puzzle.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins.
Yeah, so the UT published a couple of months ago that there were 2,839 homes available to purchase. So additionally, the UT published an article where there was a gentleman named, he's a corporate developer, but Michael Mills, who owns over 100 Airbnbs in Ocean Beach alone. If we closed those loopholes that the council knows is there, we'd be thousands of housing units available for rent immediately. We have not done that. We should not be continuing to give breaks to developers. Who's going to pay for the parks? Who's going to pay for the infrastructure? Who's going to pay for the parking? That all of those density that the developers are utilizing, who's going to pay it? You are, and I am, not the developers. That's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start with Mr. Hoskins on this one. Many longtime D9 residents are worried about affordability of their rental units through displacement and gentrification. What would your plan be to protect renters, and would you support protections against no-fault eviction?
Yeah, I think that's already in place, the no-fault evictions. I think that's also on a state level. You know, there's certain things we can do. We can incentivize, and I'm going to call this plan the McCann and Hoskins Act, where you can incentivize programs so that, especially for elderly, where they can be a 10-year lease that it doesn't go up, and you can give tax credit to the housing providers, so it gives some bit of security for those seniors. We can do things like that. I think that's something we should pursue. And again, the problem is developers are buying the mom-and-pops' affordable housing apartments. They're destroying them, they're rebuilding, and then they're raising the rate. So the mom-and-pops' affordable housing isn't the issue, it's the developers. The same people were, you know, giving those fees and were preventing them from paying. Thank you.
Mr. Illa Rivera?
Yeah, and before I get into my part of the answer, facts matter and records matter, and Terry was adamantly opposed to the proposal that I put forward and passed to strengthen tenant protections in San Diego. No-fault evictions were happening at an alarming rate prior to our office leading and passing tenant protections. People who'd paid their rent on time, not broken a single rule, were being forced out of their home because private property owners, landlords, both large property owners and small, saw the opportunity to flip that house into more profit, and they were doing it over and over and over again. Our office took on the most powerful property interest in the state, pushed through that and passed tenant protections, and every renter in San Diego have more protections, and seniors have additional protections, because nobody should be, should live in fear of being forced out of their home when they're paying their rent on time and abiding by the terms of the lease. I hope every single person in this room can agree on that, that when you're following the rules, when you're paying your bills, you should not have to worry whether or not you're going to have a place to live next month.
Thank you. We'll start again with Mr. Illa Rivera. What would you do to increase the supply of affordable housing in high-opportunity neighborhoods?
Again, this is, these are actions that the city council has already taken. We have incentivized development of affordable housing in high-opportunity areas. We've provided low-interest loans to proposals and projects to provide affordable housing in high-opportunity areas, and we've made some tough decisions to do that. Just a couple months ago, we made the decision to provide a loan, to provide funding for affordable housing for veterans and people at risk of homelessness in Pacific Beach. We faced significant pushback on that project, and I could not have been more proud that we did that, because with every home that is built in that project, more people will have an opportunity to live in an area that's well-resourced and connected to the services that they need to thrive. We need to do much more of that, but we've certainly started doing that, and we're seeing results from our efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins.
Yeah, so if you look around, if you look at the newspapers and you look at the price of rent that we have in San Diego, the policies are failed. They're not working. So, you know, when you allow developers to build, and then you allow them to offset affordable housing in areas that is away from where they're developing, so that it removes it from the location where the developers are, and that is what's happening. That is the reason why, as we, and we're talking about the same thing almost, that the developers are being incentivized. They're the ones that's buying up all their housing, they're the ones that's flipping them, and they're the ones that's creating the price of housing and why it's going up. Again, you see the papers, you know it either. Nothing is cheaper. Those policies have not worked. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Hoskins. What is your plan moving forward with homeless encampments on the streets?
Yeah, so I was always an advocate for nudging and removing of encampments, not to criminalize it, but, you know, there's, there would never be enough housing to house all the homeless. It doesn't address the core issues. I'm not hypocritical. I'm not going to sit here and say that, you know, again, I'm a believer that the quality of life of you is important, and when encampments are right out in your front and it's trashed every day, those are quality of life issues that you shouldn't have to deal with. So I am for encampments to be removed. I'm also for nudging. The incumbent was against a ban on encampments, and then he ensures and he tells his staffs to continue to tell people to use Get It Done, which is the same thing that he's opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Illa Rivera.
So homelessness has a multitude of impacts. The streets are not meant to be homes. There are impacts on people experiencing homelessness, and there are certainly impacts on the broader community as well. I see that. But I also know that homelessness is not inevitable. I will never accept that there will always be homeless people in San Diego. We are better than that. We have to be better than that. Homelessness is the result of a person not having a home. The data matters here. Last year, a statewide study was produced, the biggest study of homelessness in decades. Eighty-five percent of the people who were experiencing homelessness became homeless for financial circumstances. Eighty-five percent. That means it can be prevented. We have to do more to do that, and the city has put forward policies like shallow subsidies to provide seniors and families with children and people with disabilities with a little bit of help to keep them in their homes, but we can do that. And pushing folks around is not a solution. It is just creating a new problem for those people experiencing homelessness and a new problem for those folks who are in the neighborhood that folks are getting moved to.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Hoskins. Now that there are many built examples under the ADU ordinance, would you support an analysis of the efficacy of this ordinance on attaining its goals of providing affordable units and the real impacts they have on communities?
Yeah, I don't think the bonus ADU program has resulted in what it was intended for. I would be an advocate to rescind the lesser requirements that the city of San Diego has placed on our bonus ADU program and put it back at the state level. This has contributed very little to affordable housing, but what it has done, it has divided communities, it has divided neighborhoods, it's putting neighbor against neighbor. I see it all the time. I know you see it. Just look at next door, and you can tell it, how neighbors are against neighbors. The bonus ADU program, again, was flawed. We need to move it right back to where it was at the state level. Granny flats are amazing. That's what they're for. It's not designed to make condos and apartments. Thank you.
Mr. Illa Rivera?
Yeah, we are continuously requesting analysis, analyses of the ADU bonus program to see if there's ways to tweak it, to make it even more effective, but homes are being produced, and that was one of the goals. Homes, we needed more homes, and we are producing more homes. I understand that some of the changes that come with the addition of those homes pose challenges. I see that, and I appreciate that, and we have to build more housing. We must build more housing. I am looking at some of the students from San Diego State who are here with us today, and the biggest problem our city is facing in terms of our future is the lack of a future that young people are seeing in their ability to live here. And it may not be that they're able to move into one of those ADUs that are built, but when those homes are built, they are no longer going to be in competition with the folks who pursue those ADUs. Cannot be that we have a major university here and only 10% of the students there believe that they have a future in this city. We have to be better than that.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Illa Rivera on this one. If affordable housing is a priority in your view, what is your view on the city councils allowing off-sighting of affordable housing, and can you define affordable housing?
Yeah, my view of the off-sighting of affordable housing is, I support it because I support affordable housing. There is theory, and then there is practice, and we know that when we allow for certain types of off-sighting, we are allowing certain, we are allowing affordable housing to be built more quickly in certain cases. Financing affordable housing is incredibly complex. It is not a single pile of money that folks go to, they don't go to their local bank and ask for a loan for $100 million and get that and start building. They have to cobble together multiple finance sources, and then oftentimes, there's a gap, and that gap can be the difference between those homes being built or not being built. And the reason that I supported off-sighting is because the way that we did it allowed for that off-sighting to fill the gap that projects need in order for that housing to be built. So it's real easy to critique this stuff in theory, but we are working in an incredibly complex system that is not meant to provide housing as a human right, but instead derive profit from every home that is built, and that makes it so much more difficult for elegant solutions. Off-sighting is a little piece of the puzzle, not the panacea, but it's an important piece.
So are we going to follow the rules and stop when I see the stop sign? Because I'm stopping. So I think it's important that the incumbent does the same. So I'm not even sure what the question was now, so...
If affordable housing is a priority, what is your view of the city councils allowing off-sighting of affordable housing, and what is your definition of affordable housing?
Well, 93% of the ADUs that were built were from the regular ADU program. It was not from the bonus program. The ADUs that were considered affordable, they were at the 110% mark as far as annual income or median area unit income. And so, in other words, a studio is going to cost you $2,300. That's not affordable. One bedroom's going to cost you $2,600. That's not affordable. So we need to understand that, you know, first of all, it's for students, universities. Universities have an obligation to help house their students. It's really unacceptable when they continue to think that the communities are responsible for housing all their students. They need to take ownership of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoskins, we'll start this one with you. How do you plan on increasing youth engagement, specifically 18 to 25, in the district?
Yeah, that's probably a very good question. We look out in the crowd now, and it's, you know, we don't see that many youth, and of course, my eyesight's the way it is, I don't know if you're young or not. I would assume all of you are under 25, so, but I think it's the same thing. You just got to ensure that, you know, no one thinks about when they're going to be retiring at 63, when you're in your twenties, because you're young, you've got your life ahead of you, and you pursue. We need to somehow utilize whether social media and engage those individuals. We need to show them that their vote counts. It's important that their voice is heard, and, you know, and we did a horrible job of, you know, managing our country at times. So our youth is going to be the ones that save us and pull us out, so it's important that they get involved in the elected official process.
Thank you. Mr. Illa Rivera?
Yeah. My job, prior to being a council member, was working with young people, 16 to 24-years-old, to advocate and organize for the changes that they wanted to see in their community, to build the future that they believed in. And it was the most inspiring work that I have ever done and likely will ever do. And we've tried to do what we can to pull that work into our office. Our first year in office, we were champions of a program called Employ and Empower, which is created, which provides paid internship opportunities to local San Diego youth to work in city government, to move around to different departments, whether it's our office or other departments across the city, to get their hands into the weeds of what it means to begin a career in public service. We've continued to work with our schools and youth organizations that work directly with young people. We engage youth, and we pull them in by not tokenizing them, by actually making them part of the process, and believing that their voices matter and their interest in this community matters just as much as someone who's lived here for decades.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Illa Rivera, we'll start with you. The vast majority of areas in D9, this questionnaire feels, have been historically underserved. How would you advocate for these areas to ensure the city budget will allocate more programs and resources for the community of immigrants and refugees?
District Nine is the most diverse council district in the city. I think it represents the best of this city in terms of its people, and in certain ways, the worst of the city as well in terms of its history and the despair... the worst of the city as well in terms of its history and the disparities. When we think about the gaps and opportunity that exists between the backside of this high school and the front side, that is unacceptable. And we have done everything, every single day that we go to work in our office, we work to close that gap. And sometimes that means we fight with our colleagues. Sometimes that means we fight with the mayor. Sometimes that means we fight with special interests. Because the status quo in San Diego was that everyone was going to get the same piece of the pie no matter how much they needed. We do not accept that. We want to provide folks with what they need to have an opportunity to fulfill their potential. And that means better resources and better funding for communities that have not received that funding. We've passed multiple policies to provide that funding. And we're just starting to see the benefits of it flowing into those communities.
Well, I have been known to be a uniter, a problem solver and not a divider. I'm not going to say front side of Hoover High School is one thing, backside of Hoover High School is something else. I will say that it is important that we focus on the multiculturalism that is in this district. That is the jewel of San Diego. This is the jewel. The District Nine is the jewel of San Diego. We don't necessarily utilize that to our benefit. You know, we talked about each other getting a piece of the pie. You know, when I am council member, I will not take my discretionary funds and give it to any organization outside the district. That's one way. You can keep your money and give it to organizations, you know, non-faith-based or nonprofit, instead of giving it to organizations outside our district. Thank you.
Mr. Elo Rivera, do you approve of the development next to the College Rolando Library, which forces the library to lose parking? Do you have a solution to keep parking for community residents visiting the library?
Well, this is a classic example of theory versus practice. And there is not a decision that's going to come to the city council, whether it's me or Terry in that seat, that will decide whether or not that project gets built. The policies are on the books and the project is most likely going to move forward and a city council member is not going to stop that. What we can do is live in reality and have honest conversations with the community about what will happen and how we mitigate the impacts of that. There's something that I've said consistently from the time I was running for office and my time in office, sometimes the significant frustration of constituents. And that is if you all put a goal forward, we will work very hard for you to achieve that goal. But if you are trying to move us backwards or keep things as they are, I don't believe that that is realistic. I don't think that is achievable and is not a way for us to achieve a common goal. And I think the way we respond to that development is all about setting a vision for that community and moving toward that.
Yeah, so the College Rolando Library has been a very hot focal point for the past several years. Last time I spoke with one of the community groups, I explained that I probably was believing that the decision has already been made, the Ts have been crossed, and it was going to happen. So as a problem solver, I'm already trying to think of ways that we can gain back parking that we're losing. Because if we don't gain that parking, that library will cease to exist. So I think we should designate on the east side of Reservoir, the length of the property for the library and make it two-hour parking for the hours that the library is open designated for the libraries only. You know, again, I'm a problem solver. Common sense. If they take the parking, we need to come up with parking. That's the easiest way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start this with Mr. Elo Rivera. Recent measures have been proposed to limit virtual and in-person public comments. What measures would you implement to ensure you hear from the public?
Well, we utilize a number of practices to do that. I do want to give Carrie some good news. That problem has been solved. The two-hour parking will be there on Reservoir. Our office took care of that. Look, we have a responsibility to get the business of the people done and we have a responsibility to hear from the people. And I think most folks who've attended council meetings over the past couple of years would tell you that there's been some real slowdowns in our ability to get the business done. So we have to figure out ways to provide additional forums for folks to have their voices heard. I come from an organizing and advocacy background. I'm a staunch defender of the First Amendment. And it is important to regulate that in a way that allows business to get done. So we are working with community members to ensure that there are more options for folks to have their voices heard, but also to ensure that business gets done because the people deserve that. And that is what we are there to do.
It's okay. So a couple of things. I'm glad that the Office of District Nine took my suggestions months ago and is putting parking on Reservoir. I've been telling the planning group that for about seven months now, so I appreciate that they did that. I should get the credit for that. When it comes down to virtual comments and that being taken away, you know, that was done by the gentleman to my right. So the incumbent wanted to silence voices. That's not the democracy I want. We can all have word salad if we wish and we can give, you know, virtue signals. But in reality, we know who started that and who stopped it. And if it wasn't for all the community members that showed up in person, the Rules Committee would have passed that. So I want to thank the communities that showed up in force to prevent that. The council can stop word salad. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoskins, we'll start with you on this one. What would be your plan for action towards programs and options for those dealing with housing issues such as students and homeless and refugees?
Yeah, so, you know, again, I think when it comes to students, I think the universities have to have accountability, have to be held accountable, have to be held accountable for not providing students the opportunities to have housing on campus. Now, I think there may be efforts to change that. But, you know, it's very difficult when they take, when they have to go outside into communities that are, where the price is already market rate and try to, you know, rent an apartment or rent a condo. It's almost impossible. That's why they have so many people that rent from one, in one apartment. So again, I would continue to put pressure and negotiate with the actual universities and have them take ownership. Thank you.
Yeah, so kind of bit by bit, on the student's side, we are working with San Diego State to figure out ways to make it easier for them to build more student housing. I actually fully agree that every major institution from San Diego State to our military has a responsibility to provide housing for the folks that they depend on to attend their schools or provide the services that they provide. That's incredibly important. I've lobbied the Pentagon to do that for military members and I've had strong conversations with San Diego State about doing the same. We'll keep doing that. We have to build housing though for folks. We need to create affordable housing opportunities and permanent supportive housing opportunities for people experiencing homelessness. We have some of those communities here in District Nine. And I know that while there was a lot of concern about those communities being built, they're now points of pride. We need to do a lot more of that. And we need to ensure that we're not displacing folks. And that's why measures like our tenant protection ordinance and the subsidies programs that we provide are so important. Community character is not just about buildings, it's about people and keeping people in our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. We'll start with you. Are you in favor of public-owned housing? Public-owned housing?
I am a firm believer in publicly-owned housing. In fact, I think that that is one of the only ways for California and the United States to get out of the problem that we are in. The worst versions of public housing that people think of, it doesn't have to be that way. There are models that achieve fantastic outcomes right here in this country and in other parts of the world, and we can do that as well. It's about not just building the housing, but investing in the communities and in the people. And we can do that. But there is no way, no way at all, that we are going to get out of the housing crisis that we're in, the affordability crisis that we're in, if we are dependent solely on a profit-driven model to produce that housing. Even our affordable housing built by nonprofit developers relies on loans from for-profit banks to build that housing. We have to break that model and publicly-owned housing is the way to do that. I've inserted that into every legislative agenda that I can get my hands on. We keep pushing for it in San Diego and we won't stop until it gets done.
Yeah, I think it's important that we continue to pursue those options. Perhaps we can create a revolving fund that we can finance short-term constructions for mixed housing. You know, it's, again, there's plenty of, I would say, we need to, there's plenty of buildings that the city owns that we can reuse and re-refurbish and make housing. We've just got to do that. It's easier to reuse buildings than it is to make new buildings. That's something I think the city needs to focus on. We don't have to use eminent domain for that. We already have property for that. We've just got to utilize it. And again, I agree with the incumbent. I think it's important that we have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoskins, what will you do to ensure resident security in the college area when university students are present? What will you do to ensure resident security in the college area when university students are present?
So there has to be a partnership between the students who live off-campus and the communities. What we have had historically is someone will purchase a house 50 years ago. This is their retirement place. They want to wake up and see a beautiful tapestry that they bought 40 years ago. Turns out now that through all the ADUs and so forth, they have dorms, mini dorms around them. So there's a lack of continuity between the students that live off-campus and then for the homeowners that live there. Not one fault of the other. That's just how it happens. So there has to be a way to bring those together. And I think if you do that, you minimize the lack of understanding of each other. So whether you small block parties, not large one, but small block parties to get community to understand and to know the... Thank you. No, I can't, I don't, no.
Yeah, well, I do want to slightly address the premise of the question, which is that only non-students have to worry about their safety. Everyone, whether a student or a longtime resident, deserves to feel safe. That is a basic human right. So again, we need to approach it from that situation, recognizing the human needs of students and non-students. The past few years, we've worked really hard to build stronger collaboration between San Diego State, San Diego State Police, SDPD, our Development Services Department, the mayor's office, and our office. We've convened a meeting that did not exist before to try to get ahead of issues, first to respond to some of the issues that were happening and then now get ahead of it. And while it is not perfect, and I'm sure there have been some loud late nights in the college area over the last few weeks, I know that what we saw when we first entered office, which was quite frankly mayhem on many weekend evenings, has smoothed out quite a bit. That does not mean we've reached our goal yet, but we are taking really important strides in that direction and is a result of the collaboration that our office itself pulled together.
Thank you. Mr. Elo Rivera, we'll start with you on this one. How is the city reducing its climate footprint? And what else needs to be done to reduce the use of plastic and other climate warming products?
Well, we passed a climate action plan a couple of years back that was an important step in that direction. I would have liked to see this go a bit further and I think we need to be a little bit more aggressive in our implementation of that plan. Every climate organization that has endorsed in this race has endorsed me because I've always been a champion for climate justice, environmental justice, and climate action. There are certainly small things that we can do, like addressing the use of plastics. And San Diego is taking steps in that direction. We have a statewide ban now on the use of plastic bags. That's helpful. But the way that we, the most meaningful way to reduce carbon emissions in California and in San Diego is by reducing the amount of driving that people do. It's by allowing folks to live closer, to work closer to school, and to provide a multitude of mobility options. We are doing that. We are facing some pushback for some of that. But if we are serious about climate action, that's how we do it. We reduce the amount of travel time that folks have. We reduce the amount of driving that needs to be done. And we're taking steps in that direction.
So the climate action plan is unrealistic and it's unaffordable, how it is currently written. You know, if you look at our canopy from when this administration took over four years ago, the canopy is the same. We've been killing more trees than what we plant. We kill big trees and we plant saplings. That does not work with the climate at all. You know, when you take four lanes of traffic and turn it into two lanes of traffic, then what basically you have is congestion. And if you drive University Avenue at any stretch, especially from, let's say, the 15 to 54th Street, you're going to be stuck. There's nowhere around it. You know, I think that we're not Europe. I like to drive, you like to drive. I'm not saying that we can't be smart and put, you know, I'm a cyclist and put bike lanes in areas that doesn't affect traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is going to be our last question. We'll start with Mr. Elo Rivera. Given D9 is home to many migrant families, how are you connected to this diverse population to represent them?
That's why I live here. That's why I wanted to do my work here. My relationship with District Nine began as a law student right here on this campus, working at legal clinics here at Monroe Clark Middle School and Rosa Parks Elementary. And I fell in love with this community because it looked a lot like mine. Incredibly diverse, with backgrounds all over the world, practicing different religions, and coming here with the common goal of having a better life. I love this community. It's the first place where I really felt at home exactly for that reason. So my connection has existed since that time. It's doing work hand-in-hand with communities from different backgrounds, with our migrant communities, with our refugee communities. It's working with immigrant communities to ensure that their kids can eat healthy food, they have a way to get to school, and that they can continue to live in this community because they have tenant protections and housing opportunities that will keep them here. We've done that work just because of the connection with community.
Yeah, I love our multiculturalism we have in City Heights. You know, what made me want to stay here for 15 years, working as a police officer, and now what makes me want to stay here and become a council member was one night when I was on field training, there was a shooting at 40th Street at the cul-de-sac just north of Oklahoma Boulevard. A young man was shot in the face. My partner and I were probably 45 seconds from the scene. When we got there, he was doing chest compressions. I was doing the mask on his face. I was holding, I was keeping his head together as much as possible. I still see that young man every day. He only lived half a block from there in the alley. I love this place. I would die for this place. It's my home and I intend to be here. I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Okay, before our candidates give their closing statements, I'd like to thank you all for being such an attentive audience and asking such great questions. For your information, the Legal Women Voters has a website, 411, and you can get all your ballot information. Yes, and Jane is holding up this flyer that is by the front, has a QR code on it that you can use to get to that site. Okay, so Mr. Elo Rivera is going to start his closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you all again for being here. Thank you to the League, maybe it's for Better San Diego and be a vote for hosting this. Four years ago, a little less than four years ago, when we took office, it was December of 2020, we were at the peak of the pandemic. We were not even able to be in the same room together. My first year-plus on council was spent in Zoom meetings. There were incredible challenges that we were facing. And we have not overcome all of them, but we have made significant, significant progress since then. Over the past four years, working with community, we've strengthened tenant protections. We've improved air quality. We've taken steps toward our climate goals. We've addressed longstanding disparities in terms of how parks and libraries and recreation centers are funded. We've reduced vacancy rates and made San Diego a good place to work for the first time in decades. We have built the foundation to do great things. I do not think that we are defined by our past or the city that we've been. I do not think that we're defined by the things that we don't want to be or the things that we can't do, but by the things that we can't. I've had the good fortune of living and working in not just different cities across the state, but around the world. And I do truly believe that San Diego is a special place. But it's a special place that has not reached its potential yet. And I told you before that my passion in life is working with people and communities to see them achieve their potential. I think that the foundation has been laid to have San Diego actually tap into that potential as a great city. And I would love nothing more to have four more years to work with my amazing, dedicated team to see that vision through, to make San Diego not just a place that works for folks who have made it today, but for folks who see a future here and want a future here as well. I think we can do that, and I would love to have the opportunity to work with you all to do that.
Yeah, I also want to thank everyone for attending. I think it's a great turnout, and I appreciate your interest in what's going on with our democracy. I can also want to thank the Neighbors for Better San Diego and Viva Vote for hosting. You know, I want to consolidate and juxtapose the difference really between me and the incumbent. I am not a politician. I'm not polished, and you can tell the difference between, you know, polish and unpolish. My decision to run for city council for District Nine is not a stepping stone for future aspirations of political office. I'm running as city council because as a community relations officer, my community members that I served, businesses that I served, asked that I run for city council. They appreciated my work ethic, my belief in accountability, my belief in responsibility. And they're the ones why I'm here. You know, when I was in the military, I spent, I was probably in hundreds of life-and-death situations where I had to make a split-second, unwavering, sound decision. I take that, I bring that same mentality to my office when I take over as council member for District Nine. You will feel represented the first day I'm in office. All of you now can have my cell phone number if you wish it. You can text me. I'll call you back. No one really answers the phone anymore. So you can text me, and I'll call you back. I will be responsive. So basically, as we close, the choice is simple. If you're happy with all the programs, vote for him. If you're not, vote for me.
Okay, on behalf of Neighbors for Better San Diego and Viva Voices, and I'd like to thank the candidates for participating tonight. And I would like to thank all of you because you're here to not just be a voter, but be an informed voter. So let's give them a hand.